Welcome to the NAACP Annual School Board Candidates Forum. For the last 12 years, we have hosted this forum designed to inform the community about the importance of the school board election and to allow the community to see and hear from the candidates themselves. On behalf of the Newark NAACP, we welcome you. And although this pandemic has impacted every part of our lives, it is important to make sure we vote. We just saw how important a vote is in the last election for president. We have to make sure we don't discount any election and to vote. The purpose of this forum is to ensure you have the tools that you need to make an informed decision. I would like to introduce our timekeeper, Ms. Deborah Chandler, who will introduce our moderators.
Good evening. Mary Bennett is a longstanding advocate for children in education. She is a former teacher and principal. She retired after 30 years of working on behalf of Newark school children. She is a former teacher and principal. She is currently an adjunct professor of education at Montclair State University, working with student teachers. She holds an undergraduate degree in education from Douglas College and a master's degree in administration and supervision from Rutgers Graduate School of Education. She also led the steering committee that guided the transition of the Newark School District from a state-operated district back to local control. Mary is a life member of the Newark, New Jersey NAACP and a founding member of the Bibliofiles. Our second moderator, Ally McBride, is a longstanding advocate of teaching the history of African people here in the United States and throughout the diaspora. He is a retired corrections officer and former U.S. Marshal. A graduate of Johnson C. Smith University, he has served as a volunteer recruiter for the school by attending college fairs up and down the East Coast to encourage students to attend his alma mater. He hosts a podcast entitled "The Digital Diaspora." He is also actively involved with "African Echoes," a lecture series featuring academics and historians of African people. Ally also was instrumental in relaunching the Kwanzaa Celebration at the Newark Public Library. Ally is on the executive committee of the Newark NAACP and is my co-chairperson of the Civic Engagement Committee, our moderators for this evening.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be with you once again at something that I think is most important for everyone to participate in. And we need to understand that the pandemic, if anything, raises the level of importance of the engagement of those who are running to serve as the Board of Education members, bringing our city forward out of a pandemic. So, we need to think about the fact that, right now, after a year that we have been in the state of a pandemic, we've somewhat become accustomed to wear your mask, wash your hands, keep a social distance, and be mindful of any changes in your health, especially in breathing and body aches. It's been a lot to understand and to try to figure out how to cope with. We are not the first in history to experience this. Sadly, we will probably not be the last. In February of 1918, 104 years ago, another pandemic struck the world. It lasted 26 months. Think about it. We're only 12 months in, so it's not over yet. From a scientific view, it is something that everybody needs to understand that the scientists are studying it and trying to share the answers, but each of us has a responsibility to do what we can do to protect ourselves and our loved ones. A pandemic is a disease that is spread and impacts the world. It's not a Newark illness. It's not a New Jersey illness. It's a world illness. It's colorless, it's odorless, but it is also devastating. In 1918 to 2020, which was the last pandemic, 20 million people around the world died. We are now 12 months in, and we are at 2.7 million people with a half-million-plus Americans who have died. And remember, we're a first-world country. We're supposed to lead the way. So, we need to be mindful that as we think of electing board members, they need to think of elections to these offices in terms of what is education going to look like as we work through the pandemic? And what is education going to look like after the pandemic? It's a lot to consider. As Deborah said, if you have questions for the candidates, please post them where someone can monitor and try to share them. Tonight's forum is focused on education and those seeking the positions of authority, but most importantly, responsibility for the education of 36,000-plus young people pre-K through 12 in what comprises the Newark Public Schools. I've been a part of this system for nearly 50 years of my life, having graduated from 15th Avenue Elementary School and West Side High School, and then coming back and serving as a teacher and administrator, and then retiring and coming back yet again to try to help the district move forward post the return to local control after 22 and a half years under state operation. We have a new educator at play, and that's called the pandemic. We can't underestimate it. And whatever we do now and what we do in the next two to five years needs to be mindful of what our children, their families, and our educators have experienced going through this pandemic. The vaccine is a treatment. It's not a for-sure cure. Education has to continue to happen. We have to continue to try to support our children, our families, our educators, and understand that we are a community, and education is a critical part of that community. So, think about it. In 1918, there was no online educational access. When the pandemic hit, schools shut down and pretty much stayed shut for almost two years. Today, we do have online, but guess what? When the pandemic hit, there were some people who couldn't get online. Some people didn't have the tools. Some people had a tool but didn't have access because they didn't have Wi-Fi. We were faced with creativity challenges. Children were accustomed to being in person with their teachers. Now, they were looking at a screen. And depending upon their circumstances, all they would show was their names. They didn't show their faces. They didn't show their home environments because there were challenges there. But yet, education was supposed to continue to happen. The school is a community, and no one, but no one should ever think that it's just about books and learning. It's about the community and the relationships. So, the challenge became, how do we hold on to those relationships through a screen? Because the child is not there. You may not even see his or her face because all you see is a name. Yet, you're supposed to educate them, keep them engaged, and move them forward. Food for families became an issue because school is a place that does provide food. Some families rely on that breakfast program and the lunch program. Yet, when school closed, how was that to continue? And our district had to try to find a way to provide what is euphemistically called "grab and go" so children could come, pick up food, and go home and eat it. Families at home with multiple children were faced with, well, wait a minute. How does everybody get the time they need and the support they need with the teachers to get their questions answered? And parents were trying to figure if they could go to work, who was going to be home with the kids? We cannot deny the impact of the pandemic. And those of you seeking office need to understand that it is critical that any policies that you put in place, any programs that you support, anything the superintendent proposes, that you think about it carefully. There are 36,000-plus young people and their families relying on you to govern and to lead and to provide. With that in mind, I turn you over to my moderator colleague, Ally McBride, for the first question, where you will get a chance to make your opening comments.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And with your permission, I can move forward.
Absolutely.
Thank you. It is again a pleasure and honor to participate on this forum. And I just want to say something real short, that things will never be the same again when we speak of education. Nothing will be the same again. And I think it behooves us to take this serious. I think it also behooves us to understand that wherever we want to go, right now, right now, is the best time to reimagine how we will move forward. And of course, that starts with education. So, the first question is a two-part question. And we will start with, I guess, who should we start with?
May I interrupt?
Yes, yes.
There is a, Mary, we need to explain.
Sure.
So different this year about the three-year terms and the one-year term.
Absolutely. We know that this past year, we experienced the loss through the passing of a sitting board member, but that individual's term was not completed. Therefore, two of our candidates, Sheila Montague and Daniel Gonzalez, are running for one-year terms. They are on line B. I reiterate, Sheila Montague and Daniel Gonzalez are both running for one-year terms, and they will be on line B. We then have the usual candidates that seek three-year terms, and they will be on line A. Dawn Haynes, Asia Norton, Yolanda Johnson, Philip Wilson, Verily Santana, and Nadira Brown. So, when you vote this time around, you'll be voting for one-year terms on line B and three-year terms on line A.
Okay, thank you. Also, before I even go into the first question, we will allow each candidate to make an opening remark for two minutes. And I guess we'll start with those that, I guess, already are occupying the space. I guess we'll start with Philip Wilson. You're a mute.
Good afternoon. My name is Philip Wilson. I am running for school board election. My ballot number is 8-4. I am running for school board election because I think of the need for trades. As you looked during this pandemic this past year, only did you see open wars trades. You see, construction work was still going on. Auto mechanic work was still going on. All the body was still going on. The festival industry was still going on. And if we bring that back to the school system here in the city of Newark, our children, men and young women, will have that opportunity to have a job instead of working at McDonald's. The normal job a teenager would have, they have a trade that they can take for a lifetime. That's why I'm running, 8-4, Philip Wilson.
Okay. Asia Norton, your two-minute opening.
Yes, thank you. My name is Asia Norton. Good evening, all who are watching on Facebook. I definitely would like to take the time to thank the Newark NAACP chapter for hosting this event. It's truly valuable here in our community to allow candidates and the community to engage with one another and to hear our positions. And so, again, my name is Asia Norton. I am running on the Moving Newark's Forward ticket along with my running mates, Dawn Haynes, Verily Santana, and Daniel Gonzalez. They weren't able to be here this evening due to prior commitments, and so they do send their apologies. But they definitely look forward to attending the next forum on April 6th with the Newark Trust. And so, again, Asia Norton, I am born and raised here in the city of Newark, third-generation educator. My grandmother taught at Mill Street School. I apologize, my grandmother taught at Alexander Street School. My mother taught at Mill Street School. And I followed in their footsteps after I graduated from Simmons College in Boston. I became a mother to a now-nine-year-old son who is currently in the fourth grade. And just being a parent and teacher, trying to navigate through the education system in Newark, I had my challenges. And I definitely wanted to join the school board to help parents navigate through that system and make that system more equitable for all. I'm a graduate of Columbia University Teachers College. I have my master's in sociology and education. And I'm currently a law student at Rutgers Law School here in the city of Newark. Again, it is a pleasure to be with you all this evening with the NAACP. And I am excited to continue this conversation with you all and being a member of the Moving Newark's Forward team. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Asia. I'm not sure if you heard, everybody pretty much pay attention to Deborah Chandler because she's the timekeeper. And you might not have heard her when she said time. Next, we have Nadira Brown. Your two-minute opening statement, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nadira Brown. And the reason that I am here is because I will be the voice for the change for the future. The board, about a year ago, gave all their rights to the superintendent, and I feel as though we need to continue having the board to speak for the people, for the community. We are supposed to be here to monitor and support the superintendent, but we need to make sure it benefits everyone. This pandemic has taught us so much in this last year. And I still don't understand, as a parent, when it started, we were lacking the Chromebooks. This shit had already been in our school system. It took us over 20 years to get back the control, not two years, three, over 20. In the last two years, we finally received the full control. And going forward, we need to continue that. We need to let the parents know. Let them be involved. And that's the reason why I'm here. Many say they don't know me. They don't, but get to know me. And I will show you that we need to speak up going forward for the future for our children. A year later, we're still talking about lack of computers, lack of Wi-Fi. It's a whole year later. We need to talk to administrations and teachers. We need to know going forward, the school's about to open. Have we even had a plan? But I've noticed with the board now, we've tried to censor the parents. We need to bring in more parents. I've heard about all the great walks and talks going to DC. I wasn't there because I didn't know about it. Being in a community, I am able to network and connect. And I feel as though that's what we need to do going forward. It shouldn't be a gap between traditional charter and private. We're all one community, and we're all dealing with this pandemic together. I say, take a chance. Make that change. Nadira Brown, A5. Thank you.
Okay, again, let's be mindful of the time. Sheila Montague, your two-minute opening.
Hello, everyone. And I just want to say thank you to the hosts of tonight's NAACP. Thank you for having me. And I also will reiterate every time it's my time to talk that I'm supposed to be debating a candidate that was put in because it was said that this vacant seat belonged to a Hispanic. It was a Hispanic seat. This was what was going around in our community. And so, this person that I'm running against doesn't know anything probably about education, but more importantly, he's not here tonight to represent that community. And it's by and large to the point that, for near a decade, our public schools, our public schools board has been exploited by politics. And it has not been advantageous at all to the parents and their wants, their needs, their desires. Without their children, there would be no school board. Yet and still, every time, what they want gets ignored. Case in point, there had been a pattern of behavior where as the next highest vote getter received the vacant seat. But when it came down to me, when it was, when I was not a Hispanic person, that is not what happened. They changed that pattern of behavior, and they put someone in who does not know the issues, who has not been on feet to the ground at all on any of the issues that were already discussed here on this evening. And we must bring a stop to that. Right now, there's legislation to pull our votes back in 43 different states. That's going to greatly impact our children, who, after a decade of the current Newark's administration seating, nine members on the school board, the Almazad Act from 2002, has still not been fully implemented. And even at the time when it's being talked about, near a decade later, it's a watered-down version that's being discussed. We must act now as parents of the community. We must vote B1 because my opponent is not here tonight. And again, I want to make it clear that everybody else who is speaking tonight, they're not my opponent. These are two different elections put together because of the fact that politics decided to put these two elections together to further exploit our children from the prison pipeline and to the school-to-poverty pipeline. And as a native New Yorker and a lifelong educator, I'm here to see that that does not continue. Thank you. My name is Sheila Montague, B1.
Thank you. And last but not least, Ms. Yolanda Johnson.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much, NAACP, for hosting this. My name is Yolanda Johnson. I am A6, a lifelong Newark resident, mother of five adult children, and one who currently attends Newark Public School. I spent over 20 years volunteering in the Newark Public School District, who believes parental engagement plays an intricate role in a child's educational experience. I'm a former PTA president. I successfully negotiated 500 pre-K 3 and 4 seats in addition to the opening of four pre-K 3 and 4 classrooms at George Washington Carper. I currently serve on the reopening Task Force Committee for Newark Board of Education and the CTE Teachers Committee for both University and Eastside High School. If I am elected, I will ensure that parents and community members are the voices at the table, and I will make sure that we have access to equitable resources. Raise your voice for the right choice. Yolanda Johnson, A6. Thank you.
And that concludes the first question. And I will pass it on to Elder Bennett.
Good evening again. And so, candidates, I would ask you to think of governance. And as we were working to return to local control, it was critical that governance be reinstated as the hallmark to get us back to being in local control. So, my question to you, and each of you will have one minute to answer, what are two roles of the school board members in their local district? What is the most important policy you believe you need to see adopted or revised by the Newark Board of Education? I repeat it. What are two roles of the school board members in their local school district? And what is the most important policy you believe needs to be adopted or revised by the Newark Board of Education? And we will start with Ms. Norton.
Excuse me, Ms. Bennett. Before you start, may I advise the respondents that you have one minute to respond to this question?
Thank you, Ms. Bennett, for the question. And so, as a board member for the past three or so years, what I believe to be the two most important roles of a board member is, one, selecting a superintendent. The superintendent guides us in the policies and how the district functions. And then, after we select a superintendent, then we must evaluate the superintendent. And so, those, to me, are the two most important roles of a school board member, selecting a superintendent and evaluating the superintendent to making sure that we are holding him or her accountable for what the people here in the city of Newark, on the students, the families, the teachers, et cetera, the standards that they hold board members to, those board members hold the superintendent to. The policies that I feel as though are critical to our district was the enrollment system. It wasn't necessarily a policy, but it's something that truly affected all families here in the city.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Asia. Sheila Montague, do you need the question repeated or are you ready?
No, I don't. But because, because I'm running in a different election, can I add some of my questions outside of the three-year term?
You need to, in terms of this question, it's one year or three years. There will be instances when policy decisions have to be made. So, the issue of governance is the topic.
Okay. Okay, so no worries. Okay, so I have a minute. Okay, so two roles that I believe that should definitely be of the school board is, number one, to act in the best interest of the parents and not in the best interest of special interests or senators or anybody else in legislation that funds their campaigns. The next thing that I think that needs to be done in terms of roles as a school board, again, is to put the parents' purse first. And when you see that you have a president of a school board that calls parents, well, terms, when it's time for them to speak, calls them out to be quote-unquote bullshit. They need to do the right thing and make that person step down, or at the very least, to speak out against it on behalf of the parents. And in terms of policy, the first thing that we need to do is to make sure that these kids are attending school because we know right now that students are not attending school. And instead of covering up, let's make sure that we do the best that we could do to get these kids in school. And it starts with telling the truth about what's really going on. Thank you. B1, Sheila Montague.
Thank you. Yolanda Johnson.
Yolanda Johnson, A6. My first two policies that are important to me are adopting policies and reviewing them for effectiveness and adopting a budget and setting a tax rate. And so, governance, for me, is to communicate with the community effectively. Based on the policies not being amended in 2010, the board was able, the board president or the board chair was able to disrespect the community and disrespect the parents and students, and more specifically, the students that were signed up to speak. And so, I will ensure that we have policies that align with respect for the community and also governance of our board and how we conduct ourselves in the public official role. A6, Yolanda Johnson.
Thank you. Philip Wilson, please. You're a mute.
Philip Wilson, A4. Picking a superintendent that's from the community, that understands the community and what the community needs, and putting the community first, as in the parents and children. During this pandemic, we have seen that the school system has lacked. I have three children that are in Newark Public Schools that attend ECC South. And it took me over, I'd say, the first three months to get a Chromebook. And when I got a Chromebook, I had one Chromebook. I have three students in there that's enrolled. So, putting the community needs first, putting the community needs first is my most important thing. Without the community, we don't have the students. Philip Wilson, A4.
Thank you. Nadira Brown, please.
Hello. The two things that I've noticed what the board is responsible for would be that they suspend the policies and also empower the superintendent. And as I stated before, we gave, the board gave away their power to the superintendent right now, and we need to receive that power back also to ensure that all the districts are operating at a high level. The issue of the Chromebooks and the Wi-Fi is still an issue a year later. We need to take that into consideration and get those things resolved because going forward, this is still needed to continue the education for the children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I will return it to my colleague, Ally, for the next question.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Before I read the next question, I just want to let everyone out in the social media arena, that questions can be put into the chat until 7:30. So, you got close to a half an hour, and someone will gather those questions alongside of the questions that we email. So, just to reiterate that, questions can be put into the chat until 7:30. All right? And someone is gathering them. And we're going to go in reverse. So, we're going to start with you this time, Yolanda. Teaching and learning are critical areas in the overall district's educational operation. Parents are concerned about learning laws. Parents are concerned about learning loss due to the pandemic. Is there any policy you think needs to be adopted or revised by the board to accommodate the learning loss concerns?
Yes, um, policy that refer, Yolanda Johnson, A six. The policy that refers to community input. I'm not sure what file code that is. However, during the pandemic, students were without devices and teachers lacked internet, stable internet resources. Being a parent and a parent advocate who is currently working on the project with closing the digital divide and ensuring that our students, our teachers, and our families have stable internet and all students across the district have devices that they cannot just borrow, but to keep for themselves. I have reached out to newspaper articles. I have reached out to media. This is an ongoing project, and I think that there should be some kind of communication between teachers and the families. Yolanda Johnson, A six.
All right. Nadira Brown, do you need me to read it over? Do you need to read the question over for you?
You can. Yes, please. Thank you.
Teaching and learning are critical areas in the overall district's educational operation. Parents are concerned about learning loss due to the pandemic. Is there any policy you think needs to be adopted or revised by the board to accommodate the learning loss concerns?
Okay, as a parent, I I take offense with sometimes with the the learning loss. My child never lost anything. It may not necessarily be with the curriculum that is given. But I do think where we should have a conversation in the community because it appears that every school is doing something different. One school has four hours a day. Some school does eight hours a day. And we need to come together to see what are the basic needs that the children, because they're not losing anything as far as knowledge. They're learning something different. It may not be the curriculum at hand, but we need to come together to adapt the policy. What will be required for them to go forward? Because I don't see failing a child due to remote learning and due to the fact that a teacher is having difficulty with too many students. We need to come together and adopt something new. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Philip Randolph. I mean, I'm sorry, Philip Wilson, thinking about Philip Randolph, right? Mister Philip Wilson, you need me to read the question over?
Yes, one more time, please.
Okay, no problem.
It's teaching and learning. I'm I'm fine with that. I'm fine. I'm fine with that. I think the gap is between teaching and learning. Like I said before, I have three students that's in pre K three and pre K four. What was it? Pre K four, wasn't pre K three. Two is pre K three. And the problem that I have is I'm juggling time between the two of them. One started eight forty, the other started nine o'clock. So I'm overlapping my time. So what I have done is I have the twins in one class and I have my son in another class. But once school is over with, I continue on teaching them myself what's going on. So my 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 three boys are very advanced. They are they are multiplication, three and four years old. But the the gap between that is that they only have an hour of what the teacher at a time. And that's that won't work for a parent like me that's in the education system as well. That that won't work. We we need more time and get get the parents more involved in with the teachers and learning as well.
Thank you, Mister Wilson. Next, Sheila Montague, do you need me to read the question over for you?
No, thank you, Ali. So my my response to this question is basically that we have scholars who run our school district. And this is not rocket science, right, to come up with a plan that works. It doesn't take us seven months to assess a plan and to see that it's not working to try to come up with something else to pilot a program. Because of that our city has a great relationship with a sitting governor, it shouldn't be anything that if needed to work with that governor and his educational secretary that he's appointed that is also familiar with the city of Newark and the issues that we face to write some policy or to construct some policy or at least suggest some policy that will help be more beneficial to our kids. If our community leaders and legislators can work with assembly people to create a bracket, to create policy to form a bracket to win a school board election, certainly they can work together to merely suggest a plan that's beneficial after several weeks even or months to make sure that our kids are getting what they need. At this time, they're definitely not. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you.
And last, but of course, not least, Ms. Asia Norton. You want me to read the question over for you?
No, I'm fine. Thank you. And thank you so much for that important question. I'm actually quite proud of what the work that the district has already done in trying to mitigate this issue. Back in the fall, the board had brought this issue to the superintendent. And the superintendent was able to implement tutoring programs where families are able to access tutors for their their students who are currently in need. Also for schools that were showing issues with chronic absenteeism due to virtual learning. The district, again, the the board highly, including myself, put heavy emphasis on providing that school support. And truly, we have directed, we have directed personnel from central office and other locations to heighten the to heighten the need that is going on at that school to increase student attendance. The district also has, we we have put together a map assessment tool we purchased, and we are training our teachers to use this tool to help them navigate their instruction in the curriculum so that when students are with us, whether it be virtual or in person, teachers have a tool that they can use to teller their instruction to the needs of that student. And so whether that child is in the first grade, second grade, third grade, et cetera, that teacher is able to meet that child where they are and provide the necessary resources. And then we also are planning how to mitigate this this issue when our students are back with us and thinking of creative ways whether making smaller pods within our classrooms. And so, of course, the work that the district has done and that the board has advocated for, including myself, has been tremendous. But we know that the work doesn't end there. And as a as a candidate, I definitely will continue to advocate for these needs, especially being a former teacher myself for six years. It's truly important to make sure that our students have the resources that they need. Thank you.
I respectfully return this responsibility back to Elder Bennett.
Thank you, Ali. Board members, we appreciate your thoughtful responses. And we would like to remind our viewing audience, whether it is through Zoom or through Facebook, about you have about nineteen minutes to post your questions that would be reviewed and we'll see how many we can possibly get the candidates to respond to in the latter portion of this evening's forum. So the next question is around the issue of finance. So I want you to just gather your thoughts. You're going to have one minute to respond to the question. And then present your answer, keeping in mind you do have one minute. And Sister Chandler will definitely let you know when your time is up. The question is as follows. What innovative ideas do you have for the district to secure additional operational funds to accommodate programmatic expansion? I will repeat it. What innovative ideas do you have for the district to secure additional operational funds to accommodate programmatic expansion by the district? And we would start with Mister Wilson. Take your, there you go. Unmute yourself, please.
Yes, I did. Yes, I I believe the district can get more funds by starting a C T E program. Operating funds by getting a good entrepreneurship with the contractors here in the city of Newark. What what work, like a work based development with with a C T E program? Meaning as in if you have a student learning construction, they can go onto a work site, be an apprentice. That that can be a generate funds, operation funds for the district, same as, you know, things like that. District funds. Yes, A four Phil Wilson. Sorry for that. I got stuck up in some of my notes.
Understood. Sheila Montague, same question. Do you need it repeated?
I believe I have it. Thank you so much, Ms. Bennett. So in terms of finance and securing additional funds, I don't agree right now that any other funds should be added. I don't, because that money comes directly from the taxpayer. I think the two things that we need to look at is one, the reappropriation of the funds that are already in existence. Because we don't know where those funds are going, and especially since our schools have been closed. They have been saving a lot of money without our students being in school and active in those schools every day. So I think we need to take a look at that. And also, if you don't mind, I'd like to just double back with the time that I have left to talk about something that a current board member said earlier about tutorial programs. Tutorial programs is not the answer. You have students sitting on the computer already from eight in the morning to three in the afternoon. That is a lot of stress on our students. And in terms of chronic absenteeism, you're talking about training the teachers. This is not the answer. How can you train a teacher to help a child come to school? Thank you, Sheila Montague, B one.
Thank you.
And and I'd like to ask a question just for clarity. Time means we have thirty seconds left still, correct?
For this one, because it's only one minute to speak, and I want to give you an opportunity just to to get your thoughts across. At the end of the minute, I say time.
Okay, okay.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay.
Asia Norton, do you need the question repeated?
Yes, please.
The question is, what innovative ideas do you have for the district to secure additional operational funds to accommodate programmatic expansion within district schools?
Thank you for the question. So as a chair of the Finance and Budget Committee for two years, I actually went down to the state during the committee hearings to advocate the appropriate funding from the state. I think it definitely all starts there, that to fully be provide a equitable education for all of our students, we need the state to be able to fund our schools properly. And I most certainly took the opportunity to go down and talk to our representatives directly to advocate for the schools to be fully funded. Also, something that the district has done an incredible job on, in which board members, including myself, have certainly advocated for is to increase the number of parents and families filling out our F A S A, not F A S A, in filling out our breakfast and lunch application. It is highly, highly important that our families fill out the application because so much funding is tied up to to that application. And so whether students fill out, the families fill out, though they are, they can. Thank you.
Thank you. Yolanda Johnson, do you need the question repeated?
No, thank you, Ms. Bennett. Yolanda Johnson, A six. So first, I agree with Sheila, B one. First, before we add additional funding, we first have to make sure that we as a board are upkeeping good and updated policies because policies keep the finances running smoothly and in and it ensures financial integrity. According to N J S A eighteen A seventeen dash thirty one through thirty six. And I feel like if we, the innovative way to do that is what we have all along. We have parents who don't mind volunteering if we allow the P T S As, the P T As and the P T Os to do fundraising and sit at actually sit at the table of decision making and and make them inclusive. Parents will support. We have parents who are skilled in many areas of careers where we can bring them in and we can. Yolanda Johnson, A six.
Thank you, Yolanda. Nadira Brown, please.
Hello, everyone. Actually, the district already has a program that could bring in more money, but it took this pandemic to realize it. The P E B T, the pandemic, E B T card. In order to receive those benefits, an individual needed to do the school lunch application. The state decided, along with the schools, who will receive these benefits. Realized the importance until the pandemic, when everyone wanted to decide to have this card. Every time the lunch application is not done, the school is missing money. And I would strongly suggest educating the parents to know the importance. Bring in social services with the school education to inform everyone the importance of doing this application. The importance of having N J SNAP benefits in the community to feed the children and during this pandemic. So the school has lost money in many years due to the fact that there hasn't been an initiative for the parents to fill it out because they knew already the children would eat. But now we see the importance. And do you know how much money the school has lost just because of this? Thank you, Nadira Brown, A five.
Thank you all for your responses to the question. I turn it back to my colleague, Ali McBride. Mute, you're on mute.
Okay, so you can't feel bad, Philip Wilson. I just did the same thing. It's all right. So we're on question number five. The New Jersey Senate and Assembly just passed a bill that will establish a five-year community schools pilot program. If and when it is passed by the body and signed by the governor, would you support the Newark Board of Education instituting a special subcommittee to understand and recommend participation in the community schools pilot? Do you want me to read that again? We're going to start with you too, Ms. Nadira Brown. Want me to read it again?
Please, please read that again. Yes.
Got it. The New Jersey Senate and Assembly just passed a bill that will establish a five-year community schools pilot program. If and when it is passed by the body and signed by the governor, would you support the Newark Board of Education instituting a special subcommittee to understand and recommend participation in the community schools pilot?
Yes, that's why I'm here. Because we need to bridge a gap between private, traditional, public charter. And as it was indicated in the question, this is something new. We can't shy away from something that we don't know about. We need to find out. And in the community right now, we're so separated and segregated over what type of school the children goes to. During this pandemic, it showed us we're all facing similar problems some type of way, no matter what type of school you go to. And sometimes an individual is in a different type of school because for myself, I ended up sending my child to private because I never saw the application for public school. By the time that I found out there was an application, the deadline was passed. I believe there needs to be more communication. And when anything new comes in, don't shy away, find out about it. Because whether we agree with it or not, at least receive information on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Asia Norton, do you want me to read the question over?
No, I'm fine. Thank you. And so, yes, I would. I would support there being a ad hoc committee of some sort to evaluate the significance of bringing in such a pilot program. And also just recognizing that as a district, we have already implemented community schools. But I do think sometimes the community voice isn't brought to the table when such programs have existed before or prior. And so making sure that this committee is comprised of parents, teachers, students, community members, stakeholders, business folks, to make sure that voices are truly being heard. Because as we've seen in the past, if you implement something so quickly, it it's bound to fail. And so starting off with a committee of this sort comprised of members of the community, again, like families, et cetera, would be beneficial because because someone's giving us money for it doesn't mean it's good for us. Because it's being, because it's an option, doesn't mean that we have to necessarily take it. And so the thoughtful planning truly is critical. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norton. Ms. Montague, do you want me to read the question over? Or you got it?
No, Ali, I think I have it. If I don't, just let me know. My response to this, and thank you for the question, I think is a really good one, is that I definitely support community schools. I have from the onset of this journey. And while I really like, you know, candidate. I have from the onset of this journey. Um, and while I really like, um, you know, um, candidate Asia Norton, I I believe that she's being disingenuous about her support for community schools because we do know as a community that she is here representative for the charter community. And because of that, um, she can't really be for community schools because she's not, you know, like for our public schools. And Newark Public Schools is that. We have to stop this school to prison pipeline. And the only way that we're gonna do that is to have a common interest in all, not some, of the students who attend Newark Public Schools. And while charter is also represented in that indeed, we have to make sure that we do things like be respectful and act in all the parents' best interests, such as not referring to them as a, a, a profane, a profane word when they do participate. We want to stop the exploitation of our school board um, via politics. We have to stop that because it's educationally um, devastating our special needs um, community here. We have a lot of kids who are not getting service because the politicians are. And the only way to stop that is to vote for Sheila Montague, B1. That's the vitamin this district needs at this time, along with the other candidates, which are Yolanda Johnson, Nadira Brown, and Phil Wilson for the three-year terms. Thank you again, Sheila Montague, B1.
Thank you, Sheila. Uh, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you, Sheila. I will reach out to my community stakeholders and people around to find out if that's a good policy to to bring to the table to Newark Public Schools first, before I make my decision. Um, every, every decision I will make will be from the community, not from my constituents on the board. I will find out what the community needs first, and I will bring that to the back to the board. I will be the voice for the people in the community first. Thank you, Phil Wilson, A4.
Thank you, uh, Philip. And last but not least, of course, Ms. Yolanda Johnson, do you need me to read that question again?
Yes.
Okay. The question is, the New Jersey Senate and Assembly just passed a bill that will establish a five-year community schools pilot program. If and when it is passed by the body and signed by the governor, would you support the Newark Board of Education instituting a special subcommittee to understand and recommend participation in the community schools pilot?
Yes, Yolanda, A6. I, being one of the parents who traveled across this country pushing the community schools model, I do support that as long as it is a bottom-up model and it has the five pillar, pillars that include a culturally responsive and relevant curriculum, um, wraparound supports, teachers who are teaching. Instead of um, high-stakes testing, we, we want high quali- quality teaching. We want wraparound supports such as eye care, ear care, uh, trauma-informed care, um, social and emotional supports. We want to end the school of prison pipeline. We want to get the, the cops out of schools and provide more counselors, more social workers inside the school so that um, our families are served right. And more importantly, we need parental and community engagement. Transformational community and parental engagement. And we do want to use our schools um, as um, hubs for resources. So yes, when we sit at the table, we can sit at the table. If the legislators and the governor would like to meet with community members and uh, parents, I will be glad to support it just as long it, as it has what I previously stated. Yolanda Johnson, A6.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And at this time, I want to respectfully return this responsibility to the illustrious Mary Bennett.
You're on mute, Ms. Bennett.
Uh, we've talked about a number of critical areas. Thank you, Asia. And this one, I think, is equal to all that we have said. And I want you to think carefully and thoughtfully before you respond. The question is, what qualities should the district look for when recruiting teachers and staff? What strategies should the district use to hire teachers to fill hard-to-fill vacancies such as math, science, and special education positions? Does anyone need the question repeated? No, we're good. All right, we'll begin with Ms. Brown.
And would you please repeat the question?
Absolutely, sure.
Thank you very much.
What qualities should the district look for when recruiting teachers and staff? What strategies should the district use to hire teachers to fill hard-to-fill positions such as math vacancies, science vacancies, and special education vacancies?
Okay, thank you for repeating that.
Truly.
As for any job, I feel as though there should be a public announcement. We should be able to know that the individual is qualified. Make sure, check their educational background. We may want to contact many schools, even put it up there for we can't shy away for individuals that who have just graduated. We also need individuals who are experienced. But to say that it's hard areas like math, science, special education, maybe because the individuals I come across were glad to work in those areas. So it brings me to the point where why is that a, an issue in our area? Where I know people who teach in other districts, and these are the areas that they go into and they enjoy it. So I would say, make a public announcement. Let it be known that we're hiring because a lot of times, as I've stated in the past, there's a lack of communication going on. We have a lot of great talent in our area, outside of our area. And part of the problem that I see is, we don't even know when they're hiring. Because as I stated, I know many professionals in the field where we can nominate and let them know that this place is hiring. But when there's lack of communication, maybe we're not reaching out to everyone to know that there are openings in our area for this.
Thank you. Thank you. Sheila Montague, please.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Bennett. Um, the first thing I think that we need to look for when we're trying to fill the vacancies that exist is to look inside of our school board once again and stop employing political tactics. For example, stop treating the teachers, and I'm speaking from a lifelong teacher perspective, as well as a parent whose weight rates for adults. So I have both ends that I'm looking at. Stop treating the teachers the way that you treat the parents when they come to speak by not only, because if, if you call, if you term them as bullshit, quote-unquote, right? Then you, that's how you're treating people, and that's not welcoming people to come. Parents or teachers, teachers are people. In fact, let's get it here. Teachers are actually students in many cases who went to Newark schools like I had. So you have to treat people with respect. Teachers are not being treated with respect. In fact, if you look nationally, teaching is a, a, a job right now that is not very suggested um, to incoming um, freshmen in college. And it's because of the long hours and the blatant disrespect and how politics plays a role in that. That has to stop. We have to change the lens. We have to open the door to look at things differently aside from political relationships. Like I said, I love Asia Norton to death. I love her. But that doesn't change the fact that we have two totally different political views, two totally different political views. I am for all children. She is a special interest group, and that special interest group has not only come in through the back door as education reform, but it has also came to us as um, 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 I'm sorry, labor reform. Labor reform, where many black and brown people from this community were laid off as teachers. And I have the data to prove it. So again, if we want to keep teachers and good teachers, and stop having schools turnover because our kids need some consistency, especially now more than ever. Thank you, B1, Sheila Montague. Thank you.
Thank you. Yolanda Johnson, please.
Yolanda Johnson, A6. So first, we need to uh, uh, obviously advertise it. But um, innovative styles such as apprentice-style programs in which prospective teachers um, uh, practice and hone their skills alongside um, effective teaching mentors, mentors. Of course, my first and uh, foremost um, um, idea for teachers is that teachers are able to actually go inside the classroom and teach. Teachers are paying um, back um, of college um, tuition. Um, where they are going according to um, uh, what they're not you, allowed to um, utilize in the classrooms. And so, of course, we want in, to increase the teacher pay. I feel like teachers are under um, paid, but they're overworked, and so we want to increase that. And then we can retain teachers, um, allowing teachers to just um, hone the classroom and embrace what they learned in college when, when they were going to school instead of teaching from a script is how we can recruit, we can retain, and teachers will stay in the school district uh, for a very long time. Sometimes until they retire or move on to um, another career that they're interested in. But we definitely want to um, bring that to um, the, the attention of um, recruiting, hiring, retaining um, teachers, just allowing them to be effective in what they went to school for. And just increasing, hey, A6, Yolanda Johnson.
Thank you, Yolanda. Asia Norton, please.
Yes, thank you so much, Ms. Bennett, for the question. Um, I would first like to say, thank you, teachers, all of our teachers um, here in the district, in the city of Newark, for all the work that you have done um, and you continue to do, especially now during the pandemic. It is not easy whatsoever. And as my mother is still a classroom teacher, my sister is a classroom teacher, and they have turned their living rooms, dining rooms into classrooms. And so, thank you, teachers, for all that you have done and that you continue to do for our students and families. The district um, has, I've always said that the best way to recruit teachers is to create your own teachers. And so are, so having a homegrown program, and that's exactly what we have here in the district. Um, University High School and Eastside High School have teaching programs where we collaborate with different universities, local universities here in the state of New Jersey. And they are prepped in high school and given credit. And when they go to college, they are that much closer to gaining their teacher certification. What better way to educate our students than those who actually sat in those same exact seats? Our population in the city of Newark is comprised of black and brown students. So we have, I have advocated along with my board colleagues to go to HBCUs, go to colleges and universities that are directly prepping students um, to become teachers that are of skin and of culture as our own children. And so, the board has continued to advocate for the district to increase its efforts. Going to those particular colleges and universities and to increase the programs here in the district uh, for those teaching pipeline. Thank you.
Thank you, Asia, for your response. Philip?
Yes, I believe in doing a public announcement, maybe having a career day for teachers. Teachers that, young, young adults that are coming out of college, maybe HBCUs or regular college, giving them a, a career day. Um, be there with their resume and maybe giving them a signing bonus. Instead of uh, other teachers coming from different states, coming to, to Newark Public School System and getting a three-year uh, tuition uh, waived because they, they're teaching in a black and brown community. Let's, let's get teachers out here with signing bonuses and make them, not make them, but let them stay here and, and, and teach our kids. You know, if, if, if I go to school and I see a teacher that look like, that look like me, I'll be more interested than having teachers that come from maybe Wisconsin coming to Newark just to get a, a three-year uh, uh, tuition uh, taken off so that he can go back to Wisconsin. That's not fair to our, to, to our, to our students. And background checks and different things like that will, will, will help, uh, will help us very well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank all of you for your responses to that question, and I will turn it back to my colleague, Mr. McBride.
Okay, um, I'm going to ask an impromptu question because if I'm not mistaken, I think that they're gathering the other questions, so I'll ask this question really quick. And um, here it is. How would you, as a member of the board, support, I'm sorry, let me go back, the Amistad legislation? With next year, it will be twenty years that the Amistad Bill legislation was signed into law in two thousand and two. Sponsored by Assemblyman William D. Payne and Craig Stanley. How would you, as a member of the board, support, if at all, the bill? And to your recollection, what has been done to implement or strengthen this bill? And we will start with Mr., we'll start with Mr. Wilson. Want me to read it again? I'll read it again, because it was a little choppy-choppy. You got it?
You don't have to read it again. I will have to, I will have to defer this question because I don't know too much about the Amistad Bill. Myself personally. So I like to defer the question. I'll pass on this question. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Ms. Johnson?
Yolanda Johnson, A6. So yeah, the bill um, directs the Department of Education to work with the Amistad Commission to ensure that the assessment tools for New Jersey schools are inclusive of the curricula requirements established under the bill that um, Governor Murphy just signed into law. So um, with that comes the teachers um, going on uh, real-time trips um, to see uh, demonstrations of um, slavery. And so I, as a board member, I would ensure that, one, we are working in conjunction with the um, Amistad Commission, which should have been um, taking place, but again, going back to the policies and um, ensuring that those policies are being enforced and, and make sure that those teachers are getting that hands-on training um, for the Amistad to ensure that the curriculum and the training align so that our students can get the information about themselves, the knowledge itself. Um, Yolanda Johnson, A6.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Um, Ms. uh, Nadira, you want me to read the question again, or you, you're good?
You can read the question again, please, Mr. McBride.
Okay. So, next year, it will be twenty years that the Amistad legislation was signed into law in two thousand and two. Sponsored by Assemblyman William D. Payne and Craig Stanley. How would you, as a member of the board, support, if at all, the bill? And to your recollection, what has been done to implement or strengthen this bill?
Now, my recollection, to be honest, not much has been said about it. Um, I know it was brought up many years ago, you know, wanting to bring up the fact that how we're lacking with our African-American history in the schools. But I don't really recall it really being spoken about until recently. I'm always in support of anything that's coming out new because, one, as I always said, don't just count it out. We need to find out if it's something that we should continue with, with the board, or maybe we need to make changes with. You know, we realize government is gonna bring things to us, and that's the reason that the board will be here. We need to determine what is best for the students for the future. So just because something comes across our desk, we may agree, we may disagree. But at the same time, we don't need to ignore anything because we don't want to go back twenty years of what we just went through as a city to give that control back to the state. So anything going forward to better the education, I'm all with. We can't count out things because that was the problem before. And we need to learn from the past in order to go forward. Thank you, Nadira Brown, A5.
Thank you, Nadira. Asia, do you need me to say the question again?
No, no, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, and so thank you so much for that question. It is truly something important in our community. Our community has been fighting for the, the full implementation of the Amistad Act. And actually, the district went fifteen years without a director of social studies. And under this current board, under local control, we hired a very incredible um, director to lead this initiative. And actually, the district currently is implementing the Amistad Act in arcade of five grades. And we continue to improve the curriculum as time goes on. Right now, the district is currently writing the curriculum for K, I'm sorry, for six and twelve uh, with the Amistad Act. And just the other day, I am the chair of the Programs and Instruction Committee. I am the vice chair of the Programs and Instruction Committee and have been vice chair of that committee for three years. And one thing that the committee discussed uh, this past Tuesday was the lack of board members and the lack of the district for, to communicating this to the public, and we've owned that. And we have charged the district And we have charged the district very heavily to do community roundtables to inform the public of the different initiatives and of the different implementations that we have currently done in the district um to to educate. And we're going to do a, we're in the process of doing it um to educating the public. But just know, K to five, the Amistad Act has actually been incorporated into our students' curriculum. And again, in six to twelve, the curriculum is being written right now by our work's social studies director and her team. Thank you.
Thank you, Asia. Um, and Sheila Montague, do you need me to read the question again?
No.
Got it? Got it? Okay.
Yes, thank you. So um just to piggyback off what candidate Asia Norton just said um about it already being in the curriculum. Um again, um it is 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 disingenuous. Um first of all, phonics is not in the curriculum, cursive writing is not in the curriculum, financial literacy is not in the curriculum. And these are all things that are us as a people, not slavery, but have a history, right? Of bringing and contributing to this country that our students need to learn about. So the first thing that we could do as a school board member, right, is to sincerely advocate for it. And the way we advocate for it is not having political pundits, right, on the school board. And I see in the chat, there's so many people are saying, oh, well, Phil doesn't know about this, and Deborah doesn't know about that, and Sheila Montague is this, or Yolanda is that. But let me tell you what we all for have in common. We care sincerely about this community, about the parents and about the kids that go here. Now, that's not to say that the other candidates not are not, but those other candidates are controlled by political powers that we are not. And we are the candidates that this community needs to drive their children forward where they all need to be, not some, all of the children. Whether they're charter students, we're all in the same boat together. We live here together. These people who control our candidates and pay for these candidates, they don't live here in our community. So they, when they put candidates up, candidates have to represent their best interest. Guys, we're here to represent yours. Phil is absolutely right. We need Phil on this school board. When he's talking about trade, I have a black son. I take, I teach him, you get a college degree and you learn a trade, just like Phil said, so that we can take care of, they can take care of us. See, education is not just what we get in an institution. It's what we learned that we can make applicable to our futures, and we need that. So when it comes to virtual movies that we're talking about, we can show the kids Judas and the Black Messiah, right? We can bring that to the um to the forefront in relation to the Amistad perhaps. Or we could work more collaboratively with the source of uh knowledge bookstore, right? The kids could have books that they're reading about individually and independently. We also um can look into and raise our voice to the fact that money was snatched from the training of teachers for the Amistad Act from a state level. That's something that I have not heard our school board
Hi.
On at all. Um B one, Sheila Montague, thank you.
Thank you. And I will return the responsibility to Elder Mary Bennett.
Um excuse me, I would just like to interject before this last round of questions because time is getting on. So I and I want to make sure that um the questions from Facebook are also asked, or at least a couple of them. So can we um do a rapid round so that this last question that Mary Bennett is going to ask that it be given a thirty-second time period as opposed to a minute? And then when she finishes, um there are at least three questions from the uh Facebook audience um that we would ask as a rapid round so that we can get them all um answered within our remaining timeframe.
Certainly. I'll begin with you, Philip, and the rest of your colleagues. The same question applies. What is the most important issue you will champion if you're elected as a board member? What is the most important issue you will champion if you're elected to serve on the Newark Board of Education? Philip?
The most important issue is trades, is is lack of trades here in North Public School System. I understand that, you know, Eastside is uh not Eastside, but a school is is coming to the East Ward for vocational training and another school is coming, old West McKinney Street, is becoming a trade. But I believe that every student from fifth grade and up should be able to learn the trade in a school that they currently go to. Or have a program that kids are bused in from each school to go to do a trade, maybe in the morning.
Time.
A and B days. Phil Wilson, A four.
Yolanda, do you need the question repeated?
Yes.
What is the most important issue you will champion if you're elected to the Newark Board of Education?
The most important issue that I will champion is uh communication transparency um between community members and parents. Parents, uh effective parental engagement drives um school districts and across the country, it has been done and has been successful. We don't have that here because we have a board um that was put in place by um elected officials, by um uh money backers who necessarily don't care about parental engagement. Yolanda Johnson, A six.
Thank you. Nadira Brown, please. Same question.
Yes, I would advocate flow of information from the top to the bottom because with the information being known to everyone, many changes would be done, starting with the superintendent down to the children. The flow of information and communication. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheila Montague?
Can you please repeat the question?
Yes. What is the most important issue you would champion if you're elected to the Newark Board of Education?
Thank you. The most important issue that I would champion is the fact that um I would definitely want to know why the old Banaja um Ben um Bannaka Center location is now a car lot? How did Weekway High School become a shared location? How did Old Maple get torn down? How did George Washington Harvard become a shared location? How is the old Dayton Street an MPS storage facility? How is the old Miller Street a homeless shelter? Well, how was um Bergen Street School burned and wasn't even attempted to be saved? These issues, along with forty-three states rolling back our voting rights, puts us in a state of emergency. Education very important, and we need to get on top of that sincerely. Thank you. B one.
Asia Norton, you serve on the board. What is the most important issue you are currently or would champion?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Bennett, for the question. Um our students. Our students are the most important issue uh for us to advocate for. All of our students have different needs. All of our students require different resources. And to only advocate for one population is to not advocate for any population. And so I will continue to advocate for all of our children. And by doing that, advocating for our teachers to have the necessary materials, for our parents to have the information that they need. At the end of the day, I'm running for the school board for our students, for our children, for our future. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you all.
Um the there is a question from Facebook um for, this is for thirty-second um round. Where do you stand on removing the Newark Police Department from schools? Should those funds be allocated to community-based interventions?
Philip, you want to start?
Yes, I'll start. Yes, I didn't know Newark Police was in Newark Public Schools. I thought it was Newark Special Police Officers. Um, I believe they are needed, maybe be outside the school, not inside the school. We have security guards for to be inside the school. I think the Newark Special should be outside the school, monitoring the school, driving around the school, and making sure the school is safe, like a resource officer. I don't think you need to be inside the school with a gun because they can be attacked and the gun can be taken from there.
Thank you.
Four.
Thank you, Asia.
I apologize. Can you repeat the question, Ms. Bennett?
Yes. Deborah?
Where do you stand on removing the Newark Police Department from schools? Should these funds be allocated to community-based intervention?
Um I do believe that we should not be present in our schools. The environment that it creates for our students and their learning is is not conducive. And research certainly has shown that a a prison-like environment is not a environment where education can thrive. And of course, the funds should be directed to social and emotional uh trauma that our students and families undergo on a daily basis.
Thank you. Sheila?
Yes, would you repeat the question, Ms. Bennett?
Yes, the question is whether or not uh police officers currently serving as resource officers in our schools should be removed. And if they were, where would the resources that are currently used on them go?
Okay, certainly, the police should not be there. Um in fact, that's a part of community schools. And while I won't go into that right now, I will say that we need to revisit solutions that we re um had before when I was growing up in Newark. Um if children were um on a level of misbehaved, um they would go first, I think, to Central High, for example. Um and if the problem persists, they would perhaps go to West Kenny. But it doesn't matter the school. It matters that we have schools that can cater to those um social, emotional needs or it it needs pertaining to um epilepsy even or or um there could be a lot of different needs that could cause aggression and different things that we're using police force, so those appropriated funds go to um specialty schools for those students. Thank you.
Thank you. Nadira Brown, please.
Okay, I do agree that the police should be out of the schools. Um, I couldn't fathom that idea of it. As far as where the funding should go, um I'm not currently yet on the board, but we would need to revisit and check what areas funding should go to. But definitely removing the police would be, I would agree with. Thank you.
Thank you. Yolanda Johnson, please.
Repeat the question?
Yes. Uh do you believe that police or resource officers currently in our schools should be removed? And if so, where should the funds that are currently used to employ them there, where should those funds be directed?
Yes, Yolanda Johnson, A six. I do believe that we should end the school-to-prison pipeline. We do have Newark Police Officers working part-time inside the schools. Wh- when the child behaves or acts out, um they are then reported to the Newark Police Department and then taken to the juvenile detention center. That money should be funneled into community-based organization such as Newark Community Street Team that uh prevents um violence by reducing uh uh reta- but that
Hi.
Retaliation by reducing violence. Yolanda, A six.
Thank you. Deborah?
Um another question. How can you co- help combat getting the students to show up for instruction? I'll repeat that. How will you, as a board member, combat getting the student to show, students to show up for instruction?
Ms. Gregory, can I have a follow-up?
Sure.
Um referring to virtual or in-person instruction, or it could be a combination?
A combination. They, I think they meant virtual.
Ali, do you want to take them through the responses to that question?
You've mute, you muted. You're muted.
No problem. How they would respond to um getting children, getting students to show up?
Right.
All right, okay. Yeah, um we'll start with, we'll start with Yolanda again. Thirty seconds, Yolanda.
Yolanda, A six. We can get students to show up just simply by allowing students to to have a voice. Students have a lot to talk about. Students have a lot to share, and they're not able to do that. If we allow them the space and a safe space inside the schools so that they can share um among their peers or someone that they're really close to, students will show up. If they actually knew that the teachers and the staff um really cared about them, they would show up. If the lunch was way better than what they uh is being served to them, they will show up. If the curriculum was engaging and rigorous, they would show up. Yolanda Johnson, A six.
Thank you, Yolanda. Asia Norton, thirty seconds.
Yes, thank you so much for the question uh to the public. Um this was an issue. I want to focus on the virtual aspect of attendance. And back in the fall, this was an issue, particularly at one of our high schools. And I certainly advocated for the district to focus on resources. Um whether it be funding, whether it be programs, whether it be people resources. And uh in a matter of two or three months, the attendance at that particular high school increased by forty percent. And so it's the intentionality. Going in um doesn't help. Going in on a whim doesn't help. But going in with purpose, going in with intentionality, that's how we get our students to show up.
Thank you, Asia. Sheila, thirty seconds.
Um Ali, would you repeat the question, please?
Uh how would we get our students to show up? Um and I would get, putting it to context, uh virtual, because I'm not sure if everyone
Right, right.
Consider that with their question. So, yeah. How could you get them to show up? And that also includes virtually.
Yes. Well, my suggestion would be that distance, distance learning has really been um hard to adapt to for um teachers and staff alike, that the first thing that I would suggest is a modified schedule. Whereas, for example, if kids were taking math, they shouldn't be taking math every single day. Um they should perhaps be taking it maybe Mondays and Wednesdays. And maybe if it's language arts, maybe they could do that on Tuesdays and Thursdays perhaps. And maybe we can do a combination of other subjects and alternate days. Like, there's a lot of ways to still continue the teaching without it being so stressful where kids are just sitting in front of a computer because it can cause strain to their eyes. Um also, testing. Testing needed to be out of the window. It needed to be off the table for this school year. There's no need for testing. First of all, the total legitimacy of it has been negated because the teachers can't walk around. We don't have actual proctors
Time.
What they're doing. So again, you know, just um modified lessons and no testing this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Philip, thirty seconds.
I think we need something that ex- to ex- to excite them and stimulate their minds to get them to come. It's like watching sports. When you watch sports, kids watch sports, they they want to watch it because they want to watch LeBron James, Kevin Durant. Yeah, give them something to excite their minds and make them come. They give them their full potential. A four, Phil Wilson.
Thank you, Philip. Nadira? Thirty second.
Okay, my first suggestion is ask the students why they're not showing up. I had to ask my daughter. She's on Monday through Friday, eight to four. She gets out at one o'clock Wednesday. It's too much. She's in math and English two and three hours at a time. It's too long. The only way we're gonna find out to fix the solution, you gotta ask the students, and that's part of the problem. We stop talking to the children, and it's about the children. Thank you. Nadira Brown, A five.
Thank you, Nadira. Uh did I ask everyone?
Yes.
Got you.
So uh Ms. Bennett and uh Mr. Ali, I think that um we can start closing out and allowing the candidates um to make their um two-minute closing remarks, as well as yours, and as well as some school board election information that we need to share uh with our audience.
Nadira, would you like to begin with your closing remarks?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Bennett. I want to thank everyone tonight for taking out the time to even watch and listen. Whether you know me or you don't know me, get to know me. There's always opinions and comments. Just as many before me have done a lot, I plan to do a lot myself. Tonight, I have learned a lot that I didn't know, and I'm gonna continue to speak, whether you vote for me, but please share that this election, many parents need to come out. The election is usually low in numbers, and we need for the voices to be heard. The pandemic has just made a one-year anniversary, and we don't know what the future will bring. And again, vote for Nadira Brown, the voice of change. A five. Thank you.
Asia?
Yes, thank you so much, Ms. Bennett, and thank you to the Newark chapter, Newark branch of the NDLACP for hosting this forum for the community, for parents, students, et cetera. Um I am born and raised here in the city of Newark to a family of educators. I followed in their footsteps, and I was, became a teacher myself um for six years, kindergarten teacher. Um and I taught for six years at two charter schools. I would have never thought that being a teacher would ever be something negative or something bad because to give students the power to to read, the power to do math in any setting is something that my family taught to me was important. And so no matter what school a teacher teaches at, a school that a student learns at, they're all Norkers. They're all important. And to try to create a divide is not something that our community needs, especially not now and not ever. And so on April twentieth, I'm asking that you vote for me, Asia Norton, along with my running mates, Dawn Haynes, Lethal Lee Santana, and Daniel Gonzalez, the Moving North Schools four team. And for us to continue the work that we began three years ago. Because at the end of the day, if the most important part is our students succeed. Again, the most important part is that our students succeed, and I apologize for the background music, my uh sound, my son just came in. Again, the most important part is that our students succeed, and I apologize for the background music, my sound, my son just came in. But thank you.
Thank you, Asia. Yolanda?
Can I interrupt here for a minute? Yolanda's face is not coming up. Her picture is not coming up on Facebook. And we discussed what her likeness was. But I think people can excuse the technology. And if she's willing to show her, her, her live self in, in, in what it looks like, she's welcome to do that.
Yolanda, A six. So the reason why you guys could not see me on Facebook and or social media, if you're there, is because I'm having technical difficulties. But this is the prime example of what families, students, parents, and teachers were having from March of twenty twenty since remote learning was first initiated. But my number one priority is ensuring that families have equitable educational resources that pivots them in the direction to thrive beyond college and career. So a vote for me is a vote for yourself. Yolanda Johnson, A six.
Thank you, Yolanda.
Thank you, Yolanda.
Sheila?
Yes, so I must admit that I was very nervous about this debate tonight because I had a lot to share. And I wasn't sharing. It's always a little bit nervous, nerve-wracking to try to share on the time constraints. So I just want to say that for the last several years, our community has been greatly disrespected by many of the decisions that were made by the school board. And I think one of the most important things, if we're going to put our kids first, is to have a democracy. It's okay not to be in agreement with every single thing. What is wrong is when everyone is saying yes. We cannot allow our communities to any longer be subjected to people just controlling us. There's no one silver bullet for anything. Everybody's voices matter. And what we have to do is we have to put those voices together. We have to have discussions. We all don't need to be in receipt of the same knowledge, but we have to respect each other and bring back fruitful communication. And don't worry, when you go to a doctor, you don't worry that the doctor is nice. You want to know that if you're getting brain surgery, that that brain surgeon knows how to do the job. Sheila Montague, B one, knows how to do the job. And because I have not been voted for before, as a result, we have numerous school closures. We have numerous school locations. And it's nothing wrong with that as long as this is what the community is deciding together. But these have not been our decisions. These decisions have been foisted upon us. They came across like choice, but it really wasn't choice. Anytime you have a board, board members that are nine, that you never hear intense conflict, something is wrong there. And we should be able to speak, speak our voice and speak our mind on the issues. So again, I'm asking you for your support. My name is Sheila Montague. My number is B one. I'm not running in the three-year term. I'm running in the one-year expired term. And let's be honest, all of these people did not have previous engagements tonight. They didn't come because they felt that their seat is already bought and paid for because they're positive that Norkers will about to vote. So make sure you make them liars and you guys vote. And you put in position who you want, who's going to serve your best interest. Thank you, Sheila Montague, B one.
Thank you, Sheila. Phillip, you have the last opportunity to respond to this question.
Can you repeat it? Okay, this is my final question of the night. Yes, my name is Phillip Wilson. I am running A four. I am the only black father that was running for Newark School Board and would be, if I'm elected, would be the only black father in Newark School Board currently. I am running, I am committed to putting community, parents, and family and children first. Working with the community partners, increasing their mentorship, internship opportunity for our young youth men and women in CTE trade and forever. Vote for Phil Wilson, A four. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to you, Deborah.
I want to thank the moderators, co-moderators, both Mary Bennett and Ali McBride for agreeing once again to host this annual event. It is extremely important that the community gets to know and meet and hear from the candidates. I want to give some, some important voting information. So the following information was given to me by Essex County Clerk, Chris Durkin, just so that you are familiar with what, how the election is going to run this year. The Newark School Board election will be held on Tuesday, April twentieth, twenty twenty-one. The in-person polling sites will be open from seven AM to eight PM. In-polling, in-person polling sites will be reduced. There will be multiple districts within one location. Some schools will be polling sites, but children will not be in the school. Senior housing will not be polling sites for this election. In-person voting will be conducted in the following manner. You will go into the polling site, sign in. It is, you will be given a paper ballot, a paper ballot. Voting machines will not be used. No push button, no lever. You will sign in the voting book, go to a voting station where you will be given a paper ballot to indicate your choice. And it will be scanned via an optical scan. Again, no machines will be used. It will be contactless, only paper ballots. You will be asked to vote line A for three candidates, line B for one candidate. Voting by mail. You can apply for a vote-by-mail ballot up to April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. You can get the vote-by-mail application by visiting essexclerk.com, download it and send it back or take it to the Hall of Records. Once you receive a vote-by-mail, you can drop it in the post office or in the drop boxes that were used for the general election in November. March thirty-first is the last day for voter registration to be able to vote in this April election. One of the questions that was asked was about the qualifications of the board members. And I would encourage you to go to norctrust.org. They have a campaign central link there that will have all of the bios of the candidates, all eight candidates that are running for the school board election. It is not up yet. Please give them a little bit of time. Candidates, I encourage you to send your bios and your pictures to Newark Trust so that they can upload the link and people can get an opportunity to know more about you. Every intelligent nation sees its children as its most valuable asset. That is a saying by educator named Van Dyke. We have to vote, even if we don't have children in the school district. We have to vote because we just saw in November how one vote can make a difference. We have to vote because we believe that all of our children are valuable assets to our community. We urge you to get out and vote on April twentieth. And if you are reluctant about the in-person voting based on the parameters that will be set, then we encourage you to use vote-by-mail. You have to apply for vote-by-mail unless you are a permanent vote-by-mail resident. Some people have voted by mail for years and they have checked the box that says, this is how I want to vote for the rest of the time that I'm voting. Most of us, last year, we received mail-in ballots because that was the type of election that it was. So this year, for this, for this April twentieth, we would have to apply to vote by mail for this election. And then if we want to make it permanent, there is a box to be checked. So again, please visit essexclerk.com for additional information. I want to certainly thank the candidates who came out. You came out because of the community, because you believe that the community needs to hear you and see you so that they can make an informed choice. We're not telling you who to vote for. This is a nonpartisan election and we are a nonpartisan organization. But however, we are, we implore you and we're pushing for you to go out and vote. The school board election generally has such a low turnout. It's as if we really don't care about our kids, even though we say we do. We need to vote.
Ms. Gregory?
Yes.
Can I also just interject that the, there's also going to be a budget question on the ballot on April twentieth and for the community to come out next Wednesday during the, the budget hearing. Again, there's going to be a ballot question for the budget on the, on April twentieth as, as well as the candidates. And for you to receive more information about the budget for MPS, there's going to be a budget hearing next Wednesday.
And also finally, for those of you who want to hear more from the candidates, the Newark Trust for Education will be hosting another candidate's forum on Tuesday, April sixth, from six PM to eight PM. We encourage you to go to their website. We encourage you to register for that particular forum. It will be the last forum before the election. Mr. Wilson, you have your hand up.
No, I think you answered. I just wanted to know, would they scan it right there in front of you or would you put it in a, in a box and then they may, you know,
They'll scan it in front of you. They'll scan it. It's an optical scan that they do while you're there.
Okay, so I was misunderstood. You said as in, if a kid, if, if, if a, if a person want to vote for a person, if they check off A one, that means they hold, they holding us for A one, A two, A one, A two, A, A one, A two, A three?
No.
Okay, I just wanted, I was just wanting.
Hey, it's a paper ballot. So you have to indicate who you're voting for.
Okay.
It's not a, even though there, there's a group of candidates that's running on a line, just because you pick one of those people on that line does not mean that they all get your vote. You have to vote individually for three people on line A and one person on line B. Three people on line A for three-year terms, one person on line B for a one-year term.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make clarification that, you know, it'll be scanned right there in front of that person when they come vote. Instead of, you know, putting it in a thing, then later on, he probably, you know, transported.
No. No, not at all. All right, thank you. I want to thank everyone of you. And I, I actually would like to give my moderators the last word. Do you have a last word?
I think that, I wish all of you the very best as you pursue being elected to the board. And I do hope that whether you're elected or not, your commitment to working with and monitoring and raising your voices about the things that concern our children and our community does not stop. You are a member of this community. Our children are our greatest asset. And whether you are sitting on the dais or whether you're sitting in the auditorium, you need to raise your voice. You need to ask questions and you need to offer to work with. So best of luck to you. And I thank the NAACP for always being the first organization coming out to put the forum together to present you, the candidates, to the people. Best wishes. Stay well, stay healthy, and remember, it's all about the kids.
Thank you. Ali?
Not much. I just would like to add that those that want to become involved with the NAACP and even possibly participate in this process, helping to organize, for those that think they can do better, they can. It's an opportunity to come and do better. I'm pretty sure that some can come and do better, but it's up to you to make yourself available in order to do it. Because from what I've seen, the NAACP has been doing it for a long time and it's strictly volunteer. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you all and have a good evening. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Have a good evening, all.
Good evening, everyone.